This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
President Echols is absent today and our meeting is being chaired by the President of Pro Tem, Councilman Johnny Cannon. Councilman Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Councilman Reed is also absent today. We do have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, we thank you for this opportunity to convene today. Father, we thank you for just another day in your presence, Father. We thank you for this opportunity to address the issues of city business. And right now, Father, we ask that you would touch us, Father, that we would act with wisdom, Father, and be good stewards over all that you've entrusted us over, Father. And through it all, Father, we ask that you continue to be with us and grant us mercy, Father. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pray allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee work session and council meeting held on June the 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to ratify payments of account for the week of June the 1st through the 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, Mayor? We have none today. That brings us to unfinished business. A is an ordinance amending City Code 6 and 74-233 and 74-263 regarding a municipal sales and use holiday tax. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It exempts certain covered items for sale and use tax on the first full weekend of August 2012, which is August the 3rd through the 7th. The Chair, we entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is what we normally do every year on the back-to-school, I guess I call it.
Okay.
Tax exempt week year.
We're doing it a little bit earlier this year, I think. Well, school's set back a week, so I guess we're going to do it the same weekend we usually do it, the first weekend?
Right, yeah, first weekend.
Is there any more discussion? If not, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1419 Jackson Avenue in District 5, Jack D. Clay, Senior, and wife Marjorie N. Clay being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on May the 8th. What is the pleasure to cancel?
Mr. President, on the advice from the Building Department, I'd ask for another 30-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for an additional 30 days.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1520 Lululeah Street in District 1, Banita Foster being the last known owner. Is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, would you come to the podium, please? State your name. For the City Clerk, you have five minutes, please. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Your name and address, please.
Porter Foster, 1524 Lululeah Street.
1524?
Lululeah Street.
Lululeah Street.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I take it that we'd ask for an extension. This is my mom. This is my mom's name. I don't know what all we're able to do. She at one time had a permit to try to clean it up, take the roof off, do some necessary things that would get the property lease up, I guess, to code, to get someone to work on it. And she hasn't been able to. So I would request to be able, I don't know, an extension to be able to kind of champion this for my mom. I don't know what all I'm able to do despite, you know, other than that.
How long a period would you need?
I don't know. In this, I guess I'm not really clear on what all goes into this. Is this to do away with it or is this to be able to try to bring the property up to?
Have you spoken to Brian Harbison, Building Department, about the building?
No, sir.
Okay. Brian is the one that will tell you or be able to advise you on what exactly needs to be done to the building to bring it up to code.
Okay.
And it's, and I'm sure that it would need some pretty immediate attention.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Under the circumstances. So that's, I'll leave that right there. Brian Harbison is the one that can advise you on what exactly needs to be done and the timeframe in which it would need to have been done.
Okay.
And I'll, okay, and I'll, we'll move from there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I am Brian Harbison. I'm with the Building Department. We started this case in March of 2011. There was a permit taken out in March of last year. There've been no improvements to the property that we can tell. As you can see in the picture, it's a residence that was originally built with a flat roof and large portions of that roof have collapsed and evidently have fallen through. And we wouldn't mind discussing with the owner what could be done. In my opinion, the house probably needs to be removed and I'll share that with him. We would gladly give him a demolition permit, let him do that himself at no charge. But I will discuss with him the measures he'll need to take if he chooses to try to repair and bring up to code. We're asking today for a resolution. Thank you.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. President, under the circumstances, I will ask for a 30-day table and advise Mr. Foster to get with Brian Harbison and have a clear understanding with what would happen within, after the 30 days if we get a table on this item.
Second.
Okay, is there any more discussion on this matter?
Not on the table.
Okay, on the table, I'm sorry. There's no further discussion on the table. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
And Mr. Foster, what would happen now, after 30 days? If Mr. Harbison didn't satisfy with what, you know, you all come to a resolution on, then he would proceed with the demolition. But get with him and make sure that all parties understand exactly what needs to be done. Okay.
Okay, and that's Mr. Harbison sitting right on the end, right here on the very end. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1530 Alabama Street in District 3, Michael Allen Fraser, Becky Denise Fraser Cooley, and Travis Lot being the last known owners. Is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in December of 2009. There've been no improvements. There was a permit taken out in 2009, which has since expired. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Mayor?
Brian, I rode by the outside. Is that a possible rehab, you think?
It is. I went through the House yesterday and that is one possibility.
Okay.
We'll crunch numbers and look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Be no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Brian, you gonna get with them now?
I've got one more.
You got one more, okay. I was thinking that was the last one.
Number 11.
Okay.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1503 Alabama Street in District 5.
Adam Street.
Oh, in Adam Street in District 5, I'm sorry. Christopher Lee, Lindwood, Richard Arlen, Maybin Jr., and Joyce Maybin being the last known owners. Is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in December of last year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 12 is a resolution awarding bid number 3202 for demolition of the old General Forest School. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Pacific Construction Incorporated and the amount is $139,000. The Chair, we entertain a motion to accept this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Anybody got any discussion?
Yeah, we'll, I'll say something. Part of the building is still structurally sound on the end there, facing it to the right. There'd be some rooms there for some offices or meeting rooms. And then there's a large library and a real large kitchen area that we could do some things with. The gym is remained in good condition all this time. It's still real, really good. So we can go in there and have some meeting rooms, a couple of other things maybe, and have a rec center for that part of town and that'll help the whole area right there. Got all the kids living out there. There was some discussion over a period of time about moving court over there. Is that still a possibility? We really need court moved more. We have a plan on that side for, you know, we sort of inherited all these buildings when the Board of Education moved out, but talked with chief and preliminary plans are in the making. We got the money set aside from court to move court and possibly a police precinct over to Weaver Tech. Okay. We do a lot of work in-house right there and we need a precinct, a sub precinct anyway. So he's on board with it too, that's what we're gonna do.
I'm glad to see District 6 is gonna get another community center there. We really need one over another one. And it tickles me that we're gonna get that there. That moves on to?
Another community center.
Yes, sir.
Another community center.
Yes, sir. We just have one and it's on the other side of town.
Okay.
We're gonna vote on it.
Oh, yeah, okay. I haven't voted yet, so I can't go ahead and thank y'all yet, can I?
No. They voted down. Don't get so excited.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you all. The next one's a resolution accepting conveyance of property at 913 South 15th Street. The owner is unable to maintain the property and is offered to donate it to the city. The Chair, we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is a lot that we hope to maybe sell to some of the neighbors and increase their property a little bit, so we can do that.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That brings us down to new business. Do we have any today?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's an ordinance amending City Code 2655 to place a portion of the cemetery revenue into the city capital account instead of paying it to the Forest Cemetery Foundation. I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider it.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now, ask for approval, please.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple items here. The first being a resolution awarding bid 3209 for the 2012 street resurfacing program. I'd like to ask that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is essentially this year's version of the resurfacing program. So there are a number of, obviously, there are a number of streets throughout the city that require resurfacing. As is always the case, we generally don't have enough funding to cover all of our resurfacing needs, but this is our attempt at managing that opportunity.
Okay.
What is it, 1.9 million?
It is. The program is awarded to McCartney Construction Company and it's for 1.9 million, approximately 1.9 million dollars.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the second item that I have to be considered under new business today is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the city, the Job Corps Center, and the County Sheriff's Department. I ask that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is just the renewing of a historic agreement that we've had with, between those three parties that I mentioned earlier to help maintain security at the Job Corps Center on Valley Street.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have an item. I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with American Behavioral Benefits Managers for psychological examinations for candidates for employment as police officers or fire department.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Did you include council members on that?
I asked for volunteer council members and we had one volunteer.
Okay.
Robert, we'll try to schedule you just as soon as we can get this in place.
Robert might miss next Tuesday's meeting because that's when the psychological examination will be done.
I asked.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an item. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider, and this is a resolution authorizing settlement of a lawsuit. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is settling a lawsuit with a previous city employee.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Be no further new business. That brings us to department reports, committees, boards. We have none today. That brings us to remarks by the Mayor and Council. Councilman Avery, you want to go first?
Mr. President, there's several things that I want to talk about, but due to what we had to go through, I'll just leave that alone. I've had several complaints and we talked to the Mayor upstairs briefly about attitudes for city employees and I think he's working on that, he said, and I appreciate that very much. But I just want the constituents to know that this administration is going to be working on some attitudes and hopefully they're going to be seeing some attitude changes over the next few days, weeks, and months. I think somebody mentioned the fact about some training and stuff. So, I mean, whatever we can do to make our employees realize that they are working for you, the citizens, I think this administration is committed to do that. So just bear with us and then we'll see where we go from here. And that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just like to reiterate what Councilman Avery just said. Whenever there's a concern from a citizen in the city of Gadsden that is brought to our attention, you can rest assured that that concern is carried on to the next level, that we consider every concern that you have important. And that's why we're here for you, to make sure that your interest is represented in every category, every department in the city. So don't hesitate. Again, I think some of you will know from past experiences, you know, how some things have been handled that may not have been handled in the past, but now they are being handled and work with us. And those concerns that you have, please bring them to us. And last week, I don't know, I'll retract, I'll go back and say, I made an announcement about the Stroud Avenue drainage project being delayed. And under every circumstance, whenever I say anything about the Stroud Avenue drainage project, I am very, very, very much in favor of saying that this is a joint project between the city and the county. I may have not said that last week, but if I didn't say it, every opportunity I have had in the past, I have told about this being a joint project. So please know that it is a joint project. And the letting of the bids on that, as far as we know right now, will be June 26th. So that project should be moving forward in the very near future. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do want to announce a District 2 meeting for this Thursday, June 14th, at the Thompson Community Center at 6:00 PM. Is that correct? 6:00 PM. So again, that'll be this Thursday at Thompson Community Center at 6:00 PM. It's the District 2 meeting. And we'll be covering a number of items. We'll talk some about the 411 update as well as some of the activity in the Oakley Estates area. I do want to thank the chief and the special task force for some of the activity there. We're moving forward relative to getting the community in a better position. And I do want to thank the chief, we talked a little bit about customer service, I do want to thank the chief for displaying some very good customer service practices in his initial days in office. I think he demonstrates a lot of what we would like to see going forward. So do want to thank him for that. Also, and you guys help me if I missed the date and the timing on this, but I think the Juneteenth celebration is this Saturday at Tuscaloosa Avenue, Carver Community Center. And the time is noon, I believe?
It's all day, I think.
It's an all-day celebration?
It's an all-day celebration.
Okay, all right. So I did want to make that, yeah.
Good morning. The Juneteenth, of course, yes, it is this Saturday. And it will be preceded with a motor parade. You know, businesses will be registering their vehicles on Valley Street. And from there, it'll go up Tuscaloosa and terminate at the Carver campus. The motor parade is scheduled, I believe, for 11 o'clock. But the public and vendors are more than welcome to go to the Carver site to set up. And anyone who's still interested in vending space can call myself or Floyd at the radio station at 256-546-4434. So we're looking forward to an exciting Juneteenth event and the added feature by having it on Tuscaloosa at Carver. The community center itself is open for people to go in, to cool off a bit if they want to, sit down and relax. So, you know, we have the outdoor venue, but the facilities are open also for the public to come in and rest up. So we're looking forward to it and we thank you for your support and cooperation.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Councilman Stewart?
I don't have anything this morning, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to say about a year and a half ago, when the election or two was going on, we were accused, or I was, of saving up and doing all the paving in one year. But if you'll notice, we're right back at 2 million again. It's not an election year. And I dare say, there's many cities our size that can afford to put $4 million in paving in about two and a half years, something like that. So, you know, we're not going to get them all, I'm sure, but we're plugging along, we're trying to. So just be patient with us. Thanks.
Mr. President, I do have one other thing. I'm sorry. We will have a District 1 meeting on Monday, the 18th, at the East Gadsden Recreation Center at 6 o'clock. That's Monday, June 18th at 6 o'clock, East Gadsden Recreation Center, District 1. All citizens are welcome.
Man, you said you got accused of doing what now?
Just paving at election time.
Oh. Just paving at election time?
That's Bob Echols. I mean, no.
Now, Mr. Echols, you need to keep Mr. Echols in your thoughts and prayers.
I was gonna say.
He's still out.
He's still out, he's still sick. But he likes to do the paving at election time, which I don't have a problem with, but we pave all the time here.
That's right.
You know, but, you know, they can accuse us of doing a lot of things, but that ain't one of them.
I did go by yesterday and speak with Mr. Echols. He was in good spirits and I think he was going to come home today. I think that's what I heard and he looked really good.
Supposed coming.
So we'll be glad to have him back, sitting in this chair next Tuesday. I guarantee you we will. I just want to remind everybody about the new trail. Actually, yesterday I started from Block Creek, well, from the Rescue Squad, and walked uphill to the chapel. And that was a pretty good challenge, let me tell you. Now, coming back down, it wasn't much of a challenge, but starting at the Rescue Squad, it's a real big challenge. And I thought I was going to have to stop three or four times, but I finally made it up there when I seen these older people passing me, you know, and I'm something, I gotta get with it.
You won't end up at the Rescue Squad.
Now, I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday night is Music on Meegen. We got three acts down there and there'll be free hot dogs and bottle of water and just come down there and enjoy it. And we're all the time looking for different acts that wants to come. If anybody wants to come and sing, there's a number in yesterday's paper that was put in there, Mr. Bob Campbell, that's who you call and talk to about it and he'll be glad to hook you up.
Where's that down?
It's Alabama City Gazette, by Music on Meegen. And that is Reagan's Park now. We named that to be Reagan's Park. But I was really thrilled yesterday when I seen all those people walking on that track. There was at least 40 up there yesterday. And it's really getting used. My daughter walks it all the time and she says, there's just more and more people up there when she goes. Talked to a lot of people up there yesterday and talked about how it used to be up there when they'd walk underneath the falls, you know, and all that stuff. Everybody remembers playing up there, but it was really nice. So I hope everybody gets a chance to go out and enjoy that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We adjourn.